All the meeting in order, please. December meeting of the Mont Eagle Regional Planning Commission is now in session. Roll call. Richard Black here. Greg Maloud here. Dan Sargent. Dan Brown here. Alec Mosley. Eddie Trayhan.
Here.
I think Mr. Sargent was having surgery. I hope he goes well. And I thought Alec was made, he may be just running late. Meeting minutes from the November 4th meeting. Any issues or concerns? Which to adopt? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Alright. Who's in wrong? Staff and community reports? Alright. Staff and community reports?
I don't have any current staff reports right now. The mayor has issued this one.
Alright. New business. Morton Memorial Methodist Church is asking for rezoned property that is purchased. Property is residential. They currently, the property they own is commercial one. They would like to set all of these properties together under institutional.
I mean, what they're requesting, so the current property where the church is is C1. They have a property behind the church that is R1. And what they're requesting is rezoning from R1 to institutional. Currently, R1 allows churches as a use by right. And then I'll let them explain what they want to do with the property.
My name is Debbie Byrd. And I'm representing the trustees at Morton. We're proposing to build a 50 by 100 metal building on that property to house our food ministry. It has grown so much that we're, yeah, we are serving approximately 270 to 300 families every month. So, we're thinking if we can get it in a location where it's more than just once a month, and then that'll ease the street congestion on that particular Saturday. So, that's what we're proposing to build. It's a 5,000 square foot building. We will probably have to demolish the yellow house, the barn, we haven't discussed it, and possibly the greenhouse. That one, we're not 100% sure about it yet, but we got some reports on them. But the yellow house will probably definitely want to go. But that's what we're proposing to put on there. For the purposes of serving the community better in this area. Because we serve three counties, which is more than a lot of food ministries serve. Eventually, one day, we hope to be able to help with a food closet, I mean, a clothing closet, or any other services we might could offer our neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
Thank you.
Jonathan, did you say a property was, had two parcels?
Yeah, so they have the, well, actually, I think the church owns three parcels. There's two that are front of Main Street. They're both C1. One is the church, one's the office. And they have a piece of property in the back, or behind their church parcel. It's a separate parcel. And that's where they're wanting to put their food ministry facility. I think one of the things that, you know, I've talked with them a few times, I think, right now, R1, and this is, R1, actually, all residential allows churches as a use by right. The definition of a church, you can't define what church is on extension uses that a church does. I think that this food facility would fall under that church use. I think it's protected by federal law. In terms of rezoning, I don't think that rezoning to ID fits the purpose of ID. So, it is not adjacent to ID. ID is institutional development. You know, it's intended where you have multiple buildings that are serving, you know, one, the purpose of that community or whatever. I don't think this is, it fits quite that criteria. So, I think it would be potentially spot zoning if you rezoned to ID. But I think what they're wanting is assurances that they can put their food ministry facility on this parcel, which I believe that you can, because it falls under the use of the church. The church is a use by right in R1. And I don't think that, you know, any local government can really determine what defines a church and its uses and what, in their ministry.
Is the entire property R1?
Yes.
Even the piece that backs up to the storage buildings? I don't remember that road.
It's Church Street.
Church Street, alright.
Yes.
So, that's all, so that whole parcel is R1?
Yes. So, anywhere, you saw, you see the hatch area where it's, you have Church Street and Winston Avenue. That entire parcel is R1.
Okay. And you're saying that they can do what they want to do?
Yes.
On R1?
Yeah, because it is churches in Mont Eagle zoning ordinance, churches that are used by right. And trying to define, you know, I think their food ministry facility is part of their church ministry. And I think even trying to modify that was trying to deem that that's not a church. Use the use of the church.
Tony, I think I interrupted your hand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just going, I'm here, I live right next door to the property. And as far as the church ministry building for food ministry, I don't have an issue with that. But, and they want to build a 50 by 100 building? Okay, if the, if the storage building is commercial property, why can't they do, why can't they subdivide that? Put the 50 by 100 there on that piece of property? I don't have no problem. But as far as them coming in and wanting to rezonate all, is it C2? I do have a problem. And I think that the other folks that live on that street would also have a problem.
I don't think they're going to C2. The initial discussion was that they were going to go to institutional, but now we're steering them toward residential, R1.
Well, they're already... And you're talking about the greenhouse and the yellow house. The greenhouse is being condemned, and then to someone take the sign off of it. If you go down and look at it, that house should be torn down. The yellow house, you've been in the house, Eddie, you know what kind of shape it's in. Those houses are in bad shape. And that's what we have to look at. We want to abide by the rules and regulations of the town of Mont Eagle. But it's always a burden to us until someone like the church. I go to church like these folks do. And I'm all for the church. But at the same time, you know, they don't have to come in there and take up what someone else has already established to, you know, to put a 50 by 100 building. That's my complaint. And I don't know if anyone has received a letter down there letting the people that live there know what they're going to do. Or what their intention is to do.
Thank you, Tony, sharing that with us. Further comments from the public? Commissioners, comments?
Jonathan, was a letter required to be sent to the neighbors?
So, a letter, only if it was sent for, to the board mayor alderman, and a public hearing would be required, you know, for rezoning. Of course, you guys haven't sent it yet, or if you will, you know, send it to the board mayor alderman. And that's actually more of a courtesy thing. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that says explicitly you have to send letters, but I think most municipalities will send letters and have to neighbors, because they want them to be aware of changes. That's just more of a courtesy thing than anything written in the actual ordinance.
But if it says R1, we're not changing it?
No. The only thing, again, like I said, I cannot recommend that be rezoned to institutional, because I don't think it fits any of the...
I understand.
...criteria that I think as a use, it is allowed in R1. And I think what they're wanting to do is extension of the church. And I, you know, you can talk to your town attorney, Samuel Lee, if you have any other concerns about legality of that, but I would say that I think federal law will protect its use as a church, and that you can't define that because you're not, you know... I don't think they want to go into any of the, into the weeds of what is and what is not church.
Ms. Byrd, any comments?
I mean, I understand what Tony's saying. I mean, because right now, it's R1, even if they 10 years from now abandon the food ministry, and it's R1, that's not changed. So, they couldn't set it to a storage, it couldn't become a storage facility, it couldn't become anything else.
Yeah.
So, it looks like the main protection that the local people get is leaving it as R1.
Just a minute, please. Tony, Ms. Byrd, go ahead.
Providing, that's the only building that's going to be built.
Just a minute, we'll let you address it. Go ahead, Ms. Byrd.
Well, um, we, the church, honestly, we could care less probably what the zoning is. We only want it to be a good neighbor to all our neighbors. And we just want the assurances that if we build, if we go forward and we build a food ministry building for the people that are on the plateau, that somewhere down the line, someone is not going to come along and say, "You can't build this, you're in violation," and we're in trouble with it. And the likelihood that the church is going to sell that property and subdivide it is not very great. Because the likelihood is just not that great. Because we have a beautiful piece of property there that we feel very blessed, that we have been given this property to make use of, and not just let it sit there and be a garden. Just let it, we want to use it for the people that live here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's our main purpose.
Tony, go ahead.
That's all I have, like I said, I just, as long as they're saying that they're going to build the one building, not build that building, and come back two years down the street and say, "Well, we're going to put another building here." I mean, I don't want metal buildings all the way around the block.
I understand.
And I understand what this lady's saying. You know, she's got good intentions, but she, like me, 10 years, she may not be leaving. Then what's the next man going to do? And I don't care if it's a Methodist church or what church it is.
I was calling him a man.
Thank you. You know, people will say one thing in good faith and do something else, is all I'm saying.
Got you.
And honestly, I can't tell you what's going to happen in two years.
I can't either, but I want it locked in.
I do not wish the church to be restricted as to what we have the ability to put on that property. If we stay in R1 and we put the food ministry there, and in five years, we discover that, "Oh, we need another little building here to house some other ministry we're doing."
Right.
So, we're not coming in saying, "This is the only thing that we're ever going to do."
Well, obviously, this is about zoning, I mean, when you want to do your building, you'll have to come before you again and get a permit. And if you change your use and try to add another, you would have to come there. Be a different group of faces, but they'd have to approve it before anything happens.
Exactly. So, we can't do anything without the odds approval, and then moving on to the next step and the next step.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Church property, R1 now, exists again?
Yes, exists, no, no, it exists, it's just a C lot, it's a C1.
Or C1?
Yes.
Which?
Because everything around it is...
C1.
That's not on the main draft.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, if you look on...
Commercial, you've got media, it's commercial.
Yeah, but I think it's C1 because of...
But I think the main thing that's issued here is whether or not, first of all, to recommend rezoning, which my recommendation is not to rezonate, because I don't think it fits any of the criteria to rezonate institutional. And then the other thing that they're asking is assurances that if it remains R1, can they build what they're wanting to build, which I believe they can. Now, like I said, you can talk with your town attorney if there are any other, if there are any legal issues, you have concerns about that. But I think from the zoning perspective, it says churches are used by right. And I think, you know, there are multiple federal laws that would protect, you know, a food ministry facility as an extension of a church use.
The church is not being restricted by doing what they want to do from a building standpoint, as long as they come back to us with plans and flats and...
Yeah, so they will have to submit a site plan if they're going to do that.
As long as it's part of the church.
And that has to be approved by the...
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be approved by the church.
Just to be clear, the building that they're proposing is on one lot or two lots?
One lot.
Now, that, I'm proposing the building. This is not about the building.
No, I understand, I just want to get the lay of the land. So, that's one lot that may or may not have one building on it. What about the other lots that they want? Have they been together as one or are they separate?
It's only the one lot. I think all the buildings are separate.
Yeah, it's that one lot.
Okay.
It's 2.86 acres.
And what are the two next to it?
That's private property that crosses the street, CPS.
Yeah, I think answering the earlier question in terms of, they could turn it into like a for-profit restaurant as a commercial practice. That would change...
It's got to be church-related.
Yeah. I think, yeah, but then it becomes an overarching thing of, you know, church and protections that the, you know, federal law has for churches and religious freedom.
Or they could build anything that fell into R1.
Yeah, or they could go take it all into R1.
Jonathan, the concept on ID, I agree with. We have two IDs, the Bowes and Assembly, and they are just what you said, a group of structures that serve one purpose. So, I think the R1 designation fits us much better. Further comment from the public?
I agree, I mean, I've already read the ID description, which does not match this at all.
Further comments? Commissioners? Motion's?
Movement that we approve as written?
Motion to adopt is written. On Mr. Brown.
Wait, what?
Second. Ms. Trayhan?
No.
What are we, what are we doing?
We are voting to take the lot purchased that is now R1, keep it R1, and change the existing lots they own to R1, so that all the property contiguous is R1.
No, so what, what's the amendment in the agenda is that for that one piece of parcel, they requested an application of rezoning from R1 to ID. So, you have three options. You can either approve to recommend to the board mayor alderman, you can table it, or you can reject the motion, reject the amendment and not recommend, vote to not recommend to the board.
So, if we approve the R1 on property purchase, they're going to have to come back and request that the existing property they own be changed to R1?
It's only one parcel. So, if you look at, it's that one parcel where they're wanting to build the food ministry facility. They ask for that one lot that it would be rezoned from R1 to ID. So, you can either vote to send it to the board mayor alderman for that rezoning for that one lot.
To ID?
Yeah.
Then somebody...
Is that, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Or you can just reject it. And because, and then I think what they want is assurances that they can build. I think, and I think I talked, you know, Chad supervisor, I think the plan to be shared is with them, you know, ability to say that it is a, churches are used a lot by right, and that food ministry facility is an extension of the church's use, the use of the church.
What about the existing property that's C1?
I don't think they're asking anything for that. I don't think it's...
They don't want it all contiguous one, alright.
Personally, I think we would prefer that, but the problem is that, you know, unless you would classify the church, the two existing properties where the church is, unless you can combine those two properties and say it's institutional. But I don't know if it fits the category then or not either.
But that request is not on the table tonight, right?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for changing this property from R1 to ID.
Here's the issue, I see, and maybe it's going down the wrong road. You would want all this property to be zoned the same for tax purposes, since you are a tax exempt organization, would you not?
Yes.
So, that means...
Zoning doesn't affect taxes.
Really?
So, you can have a residentially zoned area, and it's tax commercial, if they have a commercial use, or vice versa. That's, that's, I've read it a lot with realtors calling me and saying, "This is a zone commercial." I said, "It's not a zone commercial, it's a zone residential." They may have a, a, a commercial tax part, because the property accessories has taxes that way, because they have businesses.
Has nothing to do with the tax.
No, no, that would not, as far as I know, zoning does not impact that. That's just, that is just the regulations of the use that you can put on that property. So, if it's already, you know, somebody has a commercial, that, I don't believe that has any impact on that, because again, churches are allowed, and whereas, like, every zoning...
Right. So, we've got a motion on this thing, Mr. Black. Any discuss, any more discussions on that one motion? Want to discuss or want to do a second? Okay. Any further discussions? Any comments, Mrs. Byrd?
Um...
We've lost the time.
Yeah. So, we're going to let the property remain R1, and will it be in the minutes with the understanding that since we're a church, we can feel comfortable using the property for church purposes?
Yes.
And we were fully aware that we have to come to you with plans and...
Right.
Things like that. We can't just do whatever we want to.
I say yes. Any comments on that, and do we agree?
It should be included in the motion, I agree.
In the minutes.
Rather than the minutes, I think it should be included in the motion.
Thank you. I think that's a good idea.
You want to re, rephrase your motion, or you want to keep it at standing? Keep it at standing?
Well, I mean, the request was to change it to ID, and that's all the request was.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't feel like it needed rechange for them to do everything they want to do. There's no restrictions on it, other than what a church can do and what you can do in R1, correct?
I think, yeah, I think all they want is that in the motion, say that I vote to, or make a motion to deny the amendment with the understanding that the use of, is always, the use, their request is always R1.
I will draw my, earlier, now, and make a second motion to deny the request to change this property from R1 to institutional, with the understanding based on what the others today, if they're allowed to do whatever they're allowed to do as a church and R1 property.
Second on that?
Second, Pat. Whoa, whoa.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes in that period. We will include that coming in the minutes.
Thank you.
I will say for the record, I get to see all those cars that pull through there, and it's phenomenal what y'all do.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I mean, y'all have as many people over there prepping on Thursday as you do the next day. It's 5:00 in the morning with orange vests on, so I come in, I'll do that. I think Richie Parton told me y'all had 296 families last week. And Christmas coming up, I'm sure this next one is going to be even bigger.
Thank you. Well, the community comes and helps too, swiney, students, and people that live in the community, so... And that's what we want to happen more and more, is for it to be a community effort, instead of a Morton effort.
Thank you. Jonathan, one further question. Even though we denied that, do we still need to close Level 7 seat?
Well, you're not sending it to the...
Should.
Because I would be if you make a change.
Show this state subdivision, the preliminary class, whom we're here to represent. Is it yours?
Yeah. My name is Paul Fantuzzi, and I'm representing.
Thank you for joining us.
You want me to go ahead and talk about the properties? Which one we have first?
Go ahead.
The 5 lot one.
The 5 lot one, Joseph Estates. Here's the plan. Oh, I'm sorry. Here's the...
And this is Laurel Trails. Yes.
Yes, Laurel Trails. Yeah, Trail, there's two copies of that. And I also have... In this booklet, you'll have the miniature copy of that plus several, and a piece of paper that I pulled over with you. Talking about that particular property, again, tonight, we're talking about two parcels. The... The first parcel here, Laurel Trails, currently, it is two parcels of property right now. And I have combined it on that plan that you see there for purposes of building and construction and making it one. It is a R3 zone, and that R3 zone allows for 50-foot lots and 20,000 square foot of space for each lot. I have, again, condensed that entire property, or I'm attempting to condense the entire property and make it into one, and then just create five lots. If I was to leave the lots at the R, as they are currently, right now, before the approval, you would have lots, if you open up your booklets, and on the left-hand side, you'll see some very primitive pieces of paper, but the first ones are, and you'll see that pages one and two. Those two, the very, the first one is 3404, and that's the longer lot. That lot, again, is a current separate lot. And if I was to build on that lot, currently as it stands, I could build two houses and do it administratively. But I didn't want to do that, I wanted to push everything together and create wider lots and create a much more green space. So, the second parcel on page two there that you have is Lot 33. That lot is, I would then add three houses on that lot, still fall within the R3 zoning, and that would be a minor subdivision approval. And again, it would fall into the zoning, the R3 zoning on a minor subdivision. I would draw your attention to the page three in your booklet there on the left-hand side. And under the Mont Eagle subdivision requirements, I point out that those, the requirements for the R3 are identified, I'm sorry, for the, are identified in the section one, which is highlighted there in blue. You don't need a new street for this. Laurel Trails is the existing road there, and there's no new utilities necessary. All the utilities are out in front, they would just tap off those utilities. And therefore, no roads or easements or any kind of utilities would be necessary. That makes it the difference between a major subdivision and a minor subdivision. And again, that's identified in blue on page three there. If you go to page four, number 402, with the town requirements of R3 zoning, you'll see there's various zonings. We're talking about Joseph Estates, which is named after my brother, by the way. And we're talking about that, again, the original two parcels of property would entail me to put in a total of six lots. And this combined parcel on R3 would also allow me to put in six lots. I didn't want to do that, because I wanted to have green space and more availability for an open area. There is a critical requirement under the R3 of that. The minimum requirement is a 50-foot width of a lot. And 20,000 square foot of available space or lot space is necessary. So, 50-foot wide and 20,000 total. I'm in compliance with the R3 for these lots, for both the old concept and this new one that you have in front of you. But I've, again, designed it to be 75 feet of frontage instead of the 50. And instead of that R3 zoning 50-foot, to keep the nature the way it is and as many trees as I can. Regarding the...
Can we ask questions as you go?
Sure.
The top three lots, I'm going, each have 75-foot frontage?
Yes.
But then it drops to 41?
No, no, they're 7, they're 7, they're 74.9, the other ones are 7, and 75. It's a, it's a curve on there, so they, you have to add the numbers together. So, all five lots are 70, roughly 75 feet wide.
Well, the 4117 seems to be a separate lot from the...
So, you look at lot two, and that's 4117, and then the curve is 29, or 39. So, you got those together.
It's on the bottom half of 415.
Over 70 feet. All of them have over 70 feet, though, of frontage.
Yeah.
The other question, if I may. Fincham seems to say that there's no zoning, are they outside the city limits? And is this part... And is this parcel in the city limits?
Yes and no. The one parcel, I believe, Parcel 1 on there, which is the very top one on the plan, is outside the city limits, or it's in Grandi County. So, no, it's, it's kinda weird. It's a weird concept. I think Jonathan could probably clarify that more. But that parcel is, part of it is in, outside the jurisdiction of the city.
And the balance of the...
The balance of it is. And that's why I said, instead of, you know, putting it all together and just make the five, instead of having it all pieced up, little pieces. So continuing on, if you go to page five now, on your, on your booklet there, you'll see that the subdivision regulations are, in the highlighted areas of orange and yellow there, you will see a critical statement that talks about the R3 zoning ordinance. And it's often, or sometimes, it will supersede some of the subdivision regulations. Regardless, we're in R3 zoning, and in the R3 zoning, again, on the previous page, 50-foot is the minimum requirement for the lot width, and then 20, on 20,000 square foot for the total lot size. The question I have for that is to utilize a 50-foot wide lot in the R3 zoning, which this is, you would have a minimum requirement of 400 feet of depth, which is 250 feet exceeding the rule on that, on page five, under 803 Section 1, which says that the, that you cannot be, the width cannot be three times the distance or the depth of the property. But to be in an R3, on a 50-foot lot, you would have to be at 400 feet to maintain the 20,000 square foot minimum requirement. So again, that would be, that would not mathematically work out, and impossible. And again, you would, you would exceed that lot depth by 250 feet. That would be, again, mathematically impossible to cover the R3. If you utilize both the zoning and the city ordinances of R3, Lots 3, 4, and 5 on that are the ones in question, those are 72 feet deeper than the, this rule of three times the width of the, the width of the property itself. I'm not creating a large development or any kind of large subdivision. I'm merely trying to take a piece of property and put five houses on it, divide it equally across those houses, and build family homes for families that can be affordable. I'm not utilizing the R3 ability of building condos, or apartments, or duplexes, or any high-density type of stuff. I want to build the single-family homes that people can thrive with.
These are not rentals. These are family homes for sale.
Family homes, yes.
Thank you.
If you continue on page five in the orange area, you'll see a statement that says, "Unusual circumstances can make these limitations impractical." I would present that the limitations of the lot length, or depth not being greater than three times, would be the impractical part. Additionally, "And an additional length of sound buffer is necessary on those particular properties because of the commercial property that's in the rear." I'm attempting to create a rear lot green space between the new homes, the projected three new homes on Lots 3, 4, and 5, and create a sound barrier for noise from the commercial property in the rear, which is a gravel yard, which is heavy equipment operation and gravel equipment operation. Now regardless of the width of the property, whether there's two homes or three homes on Lots 3, 4, and 5, the depth of the property is the unusual circumstances that is needed to resolve the issues of the noise for these three homes. And again, whether if it's two lots, or two homes or three lots on Lots 3, 4, and 5, the lots in question, the solution would be creating more distance between the commercial property in the rear and these homes that I'm about to build. I would express that the hardship would be the noise for the new people that move in for that, and the eyesore, or the nuisance of seeing and looking out their back door and seeing that. And gaining 72 feet of space would only help. I would ask why, if the board would consider this, because I'm only adding in 72 feet on each of those lots, 3, 4, and 5, of green space as a sound barrier again, and a barrier between that commercial property. And I would think that that would be a benefit to the homeowners, to have an extra 72 feet. Although it would violate Section 803 of the rules, that would be what, that would be my proposal, is to go and do that. My third thought and final thoughts, and I won't take too much of your time. I wanted to thank you for your time. It's, I try not to be long-winded here. I have, I'd like to take a few moments to identify who I am. I didn't get a chance to do that, and what kind of person I am and such. And a book that I picked up the other day here is here in Vision Book, okay? And with the rich heritage that Mount Eagle has, and the trend we have in the area here, I know that we have to create homes for future families, and for future families to grow and live. Although the vision is strong, the problem is the lack of affordable housing is the issue. That's what I see. From the charming homes, the assembly, to the bluff homes, to the tiny homes, the opportunities for affordable homes around here are slim. And for the general rule of thumb of families moving in, the participation of that, for that vision, is dim. The town of Mount Eagle thrives on retaining its charm, of course, as I read in this book. And with the growing population, it is vital to keep Mount Eagle's charm, but yet impractical with the housing. If you go to page six there in that small book, you'll see a vision of what Mount Eagle has put together. And I highlighted it in those paragraphs there. And that's exactly what I wanna do, is build charming, quality, reasonable homes for people, and keep them, for current residents and new residents to move in. Page seven there in your booklet there. Some years ago, I've been out of the building business for quite some time, and then I'm back into it now. It's a long story, but I have built 130 houses in the Detroit metro area. And those 130 houses match the vision of Mount Eagle. Mount Eagle, the town of Mount Eagle, and like the assembly and the older, older houses in town were much like the houses that I built in the north in Detroit area, and that matched the vision. They were Victorian, Craftsman-style homes. That, those type of homes bring a sense of family and a sense of togetherness for the community. Maintaining green space also is important to me. When I was building up north, it was critical for me to keep as many trees and as many green spaces I could. Even though we would oftentimes build in the inner city, or a city that had 30 or 40-foot lots, I could keep as much as I could. But the benefit of having a lot of trees on these properties, I can keep as many as I can, and I will. And I'll work around them, because I've done it. And keep that natural beauty of the lemon. I wanna draw your attention now to the pictures. Those are eight through 11. Those are the style homes that I built in Michigan, in Detroit area. Those are Craftsman and Victoria-style homes. I took them from a catalog book, which was like this, long ago, about 2000, I started that. And I took this, and took these to architects, and said, "Can you make me these houses to match a certain area?" And that's what I had. And I put those together. They were very successful. Lots, lots of people, you know, had great comments on them, and they were never just cookie-cutter type of houses. I'd like to also draw your attention to the next pages, like Pages 12 and so on. Talk about my integrity, my beliefs, and what I support. Page 12, you'll find a certificate from the City of Madison Heights. Back in 2000, I was building a house next to a lady named Hazel. She was about 83 years old, elderly. We would talk all the time, and she had a, she had basically no family. And we would talk, and she'd give me a bottle of water or some lemonade. So what happened was, she said, "I would really love to have a new house, but I can't afford it." And so I talked it over to my wife, and we talked for quite some time. I told Hazel, "We'll build you a house." She says, "I just can't afford it, Paul." So I went to her, and she had, she had to have, she had to, she had an extra lot next to her. And I said, "Hazel, I'll tell you what. I'll take the extra lot, and I'll build you a brand-new house there that'll be handicap or barrier-free." And I built that house for her. She didn't have much family to help her, and she had terminal cancer. So I built the house barrier-free. It was two stories, but I put everything on the first level. The City of Madison Heights saw that, and then gave me a letter of accommodation for that. And there were several newspaper articles, which I'll show you in a second. Number 13 there is a historical magazine book that I got issued in here. That's this one here. And you have a copy of that, the actual page. And what it was, is I was building the houses to match neighborhoods, and to look like they've been there for a long time. And so this book, this company, these people came along and said, "Hey, we'd like to feature you in this book." And I was honored to do it. And so what they, their ideas were, is that I was building houses that were new, but they looked like yesteryear. And that was important for not only the neighborhood, but for the people that were moving in there. Page 14 and 15 are just articles about the, the house I gave to Hazel, plus my type of houses that I was building, and the type of areas I was building them in. And they talk about, it's pretty hard to read it, because it's this big. There's actually two pages on the one, the front page of the one paper. But it talked about how the lawyers and the bankers didn't believe me. Once they did, they thought I was crazy for building a new house for free, but it was the right thing to do. And I had, it was just something I wanted to do, and I did it. And we gave that house away to her, and there was no, there was nothing gained, other than my personal well-being of doing that for her. Ironically, she only lived in the house about a year and a half, but she did, we had a heck of a party to move her in, and she did have a good time, but she did, she did die about a year and a half after she moved in. 16 is an article about explaining about the integrity of builders and contractors. Up north is the same as probably here. The chances of getting good contractors or good builders are slim to none. And I wrote an article about that, and then I, the counter article was that. And then 17 and so on is letters from various folks that bought my spec homes. They didn't buy homes that were, they were finished, pretty much. And they just basically, they highlighted some stuff, and said that I accommodated the neighborhoods, accommodated them, and I was always there, and I had a strong sense of integrity and a strong sense of moral shift to building these houses. So, in closing, I suppose, regardless of whether a variance or anything for these properties is necessary, I respectfully request that the board allow these five homes to be built there under Joseph Estates, combining that property and build there. And to keep the vision of Mount Eagle, to keep the vision of Mount Eagle, to create charming, favorable, low-cost homes that are designed well to allow families to grow and thrive, and to help keep those families, or allow those families, to be inspired in the vision of what Mount Eagle's image wants to be, according to that book. That's what I would respectfully request. At least, that's all I have on Joseph Estates.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Comments, mister?
What's the average, and I may have missed it, I apologize, the average size of the house in a rough ballpark figure of your price point?
Yeah, 275, 1450. Maybe 250 if I can get better contractors. Yeah.
And there's no questions to utilities, roadways, access, and your vet?
Yeah, they're all there. I've already spoken with, well, septic tanks are kind of done. I'm just waiting on the approval from the board. And then the gas lines and frost, cable lines and water lines, Dwayne has already showed me, we've already been through all that. We actually have a water box already there for one of the houses, because there was a house currently that burned down, was there, which would be on Lot 3. And so, and then the electric is, I've spoke to them, it's an electric company down the street there, and they will, they, all they'll do is put in, they might have to put an extension pole, but they've already done it for the neighbor next door, who's in another county or another area. He's out in the city. He's building a barn, Denoma, or whatever they call it, condominium, barn dominium. Yeah, so they put a pole there, so I'm just gonna be able to branch off of those lines. And I am gonna put underground utilities, or underground wiring, because I think the overhead wiring looks terrible, and it doesn't, it doesn't look good, you know, hanging wires in the air, so I try to put that underground, always.
And there's a sewer line there?
Uh, septic.
Septic, and have you gone through any of the first...
Yeah, septics are all mapped out. All five of those lots are okay, all the way back. I don't believe that it shows on that one, but the mapping one is another one which goes to the state. They all are okay. In fact, the mapping, or the soil scientist said excellent soil, and it can accommodate three or four-bedroom houses, he thinks. That's up to the state, of course. So they're gonna be, the houses will be used two stories because of the style of the homes and such. And I'm gonna be doing, still in the works of putting up brick, that's my goal, because brick and siding ironically are pretty close in price now, maybe a couple thousand dollars difference. So I'm gonna try to do that, and I'm still in negotiations with the brick guys to see if I can get them to, in all brick, because that'll be a much better house. If not, they would be a combination of brick, and then, you know, your hardy plank or wood plank boards, and then some vinyl sidings, but I wanna keep them all, you know, different. And they all have the country porches on them, too. So that's their six-foot-wide front porches, which really give it the classy look to them.
Does anybody know if there's sewer in Highway 41 there? Do we have sewer out there?
There is, on the other side of the road.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For the comments?
I was curious.
Yeah, so the only things I have, this is a preliminary flat, so you just have to come back for a final flat. The reason why it's a preliminary flat, because it's five lots, which means that it falls under the major subdivision regulation, because there's, it doesn't fall under, you know, it's minor subdivision for, A, says four lots with us, you can combine preliminary, final flat, and then two lots or less is stop approval flats, as long as you have no variances, no leading to it. He does, he would require, if you, if you want, that these lots would be made, the variance would have to be made for the width-to-depth ratio. So, you know, it cannot be more than three times the width of the building setback line.
Is that about 1 and 2?
That's all of them, all of them violation of it. 1 and 2, you know, I think there's very good justification for that, because it's basically, that's just the curb lots there. You can't subdivide that property, because it's so long. It would make it unsubdivisible, so I think a variance would be required. 3 through 5, that becomes a little more tricky, because even though it would eliminate a lot, you could fulfill that requirement by just making it two lots rather than three lots. And so that's the thing, is you want for all of them, the variance for all of them, say, there is maybe exceptional circumstances in that, to meet the 50-foot and the 20,000 square foot, or whatever, you wouldn't be able to make it. But then again, you could also make the justification that you can connect sewer, and then that would reduce your lot size, which then would reduce, you know, your width-to-depth ratio or other things that you would have, potentially. But, and that's the, and then also showing the property lines would be abandoned, because at least one property line has to be abandoned. I think the initial one, that you know, that I had on agenda, I didn't note that initially, but there's two, it's showing two property lines to be abandoned. I think that top property line is actually where the county and then the city border ends. That's kind of, that's, and there's certainly a mistake there. Is, is the flat that you announced here, because it only showed one property lot, should it be abandoned? It's a dust. So this, if you look at the flats on, it just shows that one, which they addressed my concern there, and they need to show that property line to be abandoned, so that way, because you can't create new property lines without abandoning the current one. And then a variance would have to be created. I think 1 and 2 have very good justification. I think they'd be able to, the planning commissioner, you know, 3 through 5 also has the same justification.
For the comments?
That's one house per lot, is that correct?
That's correct.
Other comments?
Where is this, again, generally?
If you go out 41 toward Tracy City, you know where Coulson's Body Shop is? On the other side of 41 is Laurel Trails running down.
Check a left, and I think it's on the right.
That's correct.
Does it have, does it have 41 frontage at all?
No.
Probably, I looked at it the other day. It looks like some clearing has been done over there or something.
Yeah, it was cleared before I bought it.
It's probably 500 feet or better off.
It all looks like front some Laurel Trails route. But yeah, so this is just giving preliminary flat. Typically, when you have a major subdivision, this is kind of a weird flat in terms of typically, you're not gonna have this many flats on a... in terms of typically you're not going to have this many plats on a subdivision that's not putting in new roads. You're not just, you're not going to have this many lots on a plat that's not putting in new road utilities. It's not putting in any new roads or utilities, but it does fall under because you have to go minor subdivision, major subdivision to fit the criteria of minor, because it's five lots.
My common sense thought on this is we need housing, and affordable housing, and he wants to build single-family housing, and this is commercial property behind here, and it makes sense to me to do the variance for him and get the housing out there.
Thank you, Kay. Other comments?
I agree with Kay just said, we need to bring this portable housing about. What we have in front, you're simply asking us for a variance.
Correct.
That's all you're asking. So that means correct, you're meeting our standards, and you will go for building permits and everyone will be made the permit.
Yeah, it would just be for the preliminary things.
So you would have to come back and get final plat approval. That means all the signatures for utilities, yes, everything's inside.
All the signatures beyond there, and then, you know, showing that everything is ready to go. And then it would go into the building process, you know, showing the building which houses go there, which houses go where.
Further comments? Oceans? Go ahead. You?
Okay, if we're ready, I move that we approve the preliminary plat of Joseph Estate subdivision.
Do you have a second?
Yes, and I can vary it, yes, it also say with the variance.
With the variance.
Because it can't be approved without the variance.
Do you want to have a second on that?
A second?
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Much presentation, too, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Phil, some more, of course.
I have some more. You have another one there.
I know the landings, so, yes, Grant.
Can I, now that you've finished the vote on that, which I think is great, quick question for Jonathan, did I hear in his presentation that there were some contradictions between our R-three and our minor and major subdivisions in terms of ratio of width to length?
Yes.
Are there contradictions that need to be addressed?
So subdivision regulations, you know, likely can be for the zoning ordinance. Subdivision regulations, you know, that's just the minimum standards that you have in place. I think the minimum is seventy-five foot of width unless there are other, you know, unless zoning overrides that, where you can make it smaller, you can make a smaller width. Subdivision regulations also apply to the urban growth boundary. So you see, it applies to areas that, you know, urban growth boundary outside of Mont Eagle, the subdivision regulation applied, but the zoning ordinance is not. I would have to look more in depth to see if there are any real contradictions or if it's just, because subdivision only applies to the division of property. Zoning applies to more additional things beyond just subdivision.
It just sounds like, okay, we're giving an exception here, again, which I think is great, but if there's a, if there's going to be a contradiction, we're going to have to continue to give exceptions when, when there's a contradiction between zoning and subdivision, because there's a twenty thousand square foot minimum, but then there's a one-to-three ratio or whatever that is between width and depth.
The division of property, so that's, that may be something we would have to look and see. But again, you know, the idea I think behind the width-to-depth is that you don't want a bunch of, you know, you don't want throughout all of Mont Eagle, just a bunch of long, skinny lots.
I get that, I'm just, I'm bringing this up to say, hey, maybe we, somebody should take a look at this and let's get that, if there's a contradiction, let's get it corrected before we have to keep tripping over it again.
I agree with you on that, we keep stumbling on these things.
But I also agree with Katie's point, the fact that it's backed up to commercial, and it's really restricted, and what he's doing is trying to work around it, and I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you. The landings, I think we're up again.
We're up again. And again, in the order there, you'll have a smaller version, you'll have a smaller version there. This piece of property, same as before, as the other one, this piece of property has the same potential. This one is meeting all the requirements completely. Again, we're looking for a preliminary, for the preliminary site approval so that I can go in and bring this to the state for septic tanks and such. The septic mapping and all that has been done, all the tanks' locations, I believe they're on there, it shows the projected tanks' locations and the projected house locations also on there. Some of the houses will have, be different style with different garages, or, you know, T-attached garage, attached garage, but they'll be the same as you have in the same picture as the other ones, we're building those exact same houses. Again, I put up about a hundred and thirty of them in the Detroit metro area, and those were very popular. And again, with the reference letters of those people, you'll see how much they liked them even years later. There was a question that Mr. Rush had brought up about the mailboxes. I spoke to the postmaster, got a letter from the postmaster, she was, you know, in agreeance that there's no problem with the mailbox, and they'll be putting the mailbox, I told her I would do them however, it would be accommodating for the mail person, because there's going to be adding in several more stops, but he or she will not be stopping. So I have a letter here from the postmaster that okayed that, that the mailboxes would be okay, you know, putting them double next to the other mailboxes and stuff. The property itself, that's a very wooded area with white oaks. I'm going to keep all of those white oaks. If you go there and take a look at it, you'll see I've already got the houses set where they're going to go. I only got to take out two trees on one and two trees on the other one, and a couple of trees on the other one, very little. Some of the property is already cleared because the gentleman owned it before and used to store his semi trucks there. So they had, he had cleared that area, can't put trees back, which is a bummer. But I'm going to keep all the other trees and keep it as wooded as possible. The downfall of the property is the freeway is right on top of it, so the trees really help, and the green space and the distance really help. And I've got those lots, some of them are seventy-five and some of them are much wider. Some of them are ninety, some of them are seventy-eight, some of them are a hundred and ten. It's all kind of goes around that whole thing. There is one existing house that will stay, that is Twenty-six Parker, that faces the freeway, and that, you'll see that on the plan, it shows an existing house there. That one will stay, I'll end up eventually selling that house when I finish it, and I've been cleaning it up and finishing all of that currently, right now. What else with the property itself? There is, it's got a street community, it has two names, one is French Road and one is Central Road, but it's actually both. And there is currently seven houses around that street right there. The only one street would be central on the right-hand side of the plan, which will have houses facing the woods. That will be the only area that we, you know, look at houses across the street or be a traditional subdivision type of one. The houses will be spread out a lot, they all have large lots. All the lots will meet, I mean, the surveyor designed it so that all the lots have a universal backyard. So everybody, there's no, other people putting fences up, which is their criteria if they want to do that, but everybody will have, the houses will be up front, septic tanks will be in the rear, and then all of the area around will be an open area of trees and all that. And if they leave it, that would be great, I mean, obviously, when the people buy it, they can do what they want with it, but I'm going to leave all those trees in the backyards. I think that's, that's about it, unless you have any questions on that.
Mayors, discussion, questions? Public comments?
Where is this located?
I'm sorry.
Where is this located?
It is located behind the goat restaurant, you go down, it's Laurel Lake. Then you just, as you cross over the freeway, there's a street right there, everybody misses it, that's Parker. Yeah, so it's mine, and there's actually, there's a state sign, you know, billboard sign right there from an old tow truck company, and that's what it's at, and then that, that's the area right there. And that surrounds that whole area, the street goes, the city street goes all the way around the property, it's a complete circle.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Further comments?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
How many lots are you putting in there?
Uh, there is, there is ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ten and one existing, right?
One existing, correct. And they're over, they're just, at twenty thousand, it's about forty thousand, or at twenty thousand's a half acre roughly, just a child of a half acre each lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the same square footage, basically, in the same price point?
Yes, yeah, there'd be, there'd be the same houses as the other one, you know, but I would like to put fifteen hundred feet in, but the question's going to be is, is there's that price point? And so I've got, the house designs that I have off of these books are fourteen hundred and fifty, and that fourteen fifty gives the people two and a half baths, three full bedrooms, a family room, a dining room, and a kitchen, and then a laundry room, so that's, and that's what it is.
Basically the same price point as you were looking at?
Yes, absolutely.
Further comments or questions?
Is this on city water?
It is, but no sewer. Yes, David.
Are these lots in the watershed for the lake? Is it on, we're looking at Laurel Lake Drive and the cemetery's over here, you're talking about a mountain here?
Yeah, they're far away, they're across from the cemetery.
Okay, crossing down that road.
Crossing down that road, right, right. And a good question had been brought up about water pressure, talking to Dwayne and everything else, water pressure is extremely great there. In fact, I take the hose off, it's like, wow, because the plant, the water treatment plant is there, and the water comes downhill and everything else, and we've been tested the water pressure already, so we have plenty of water pressure for.
Was it water brown?
Not yet. I looked at it today, in fact, because I read on Facebook, there was, is your water brown? I didn't see it, so. We did have a water leak, and Dwayne came and fixed it, by the way, but that was great, so.
Further questions or comments?
The only things, well, so that filled us up on the review, they did show the abandonment of lot lines between existing parcels and new plat. He's reached out to the local postmaster and understand, the postmaster has said all of them will be fine. The way, the only reason this was addressed, this is not Mont Eagle regulation, this is something that USPS enforces and.
It kind of surprises me that we have jurisdiction over.
So we don't, but I, the only thing I say, I brought it up, is that, you know, when you're approving a plat, and if you pre-look plat knowingly that the post office isn't going to give, you know, postal service to those, then, you know, that kind of falls on you in the future, where they come to Mont Eagle and say, why did you approve this plat if you do it potentially? He's saying that the post office, the postmaster has said that there are no issues, that there's already existing around, so they're not going to have any concerns about giving postal service to all these new lots. That's just something that, you know, we often tell, you know, talk to our planning commissioners, or it's already addressed somehow to have a mail kiosk for a large subdivision, at the front of the subdivision, so that way the post, you know, the post office can go all around the subdivision just to. This is something that the post office enforces, and we, you know, kind of, the good, this is kind of something to, it's really, you know, Mont Eagle's not enforcing, it's just, that's something to be aware of. The main concern with this that I have is, you know, how stormwater drainage goes, because again, you're putting a decent amount of density into, you know, into this area. Even though it is R-three, everything around is single-family, compound apartments or condos. I believe you're showing swells, you know, and that there are existing culverts all around the property.
Yes.
And, you know, that's, I'm not an engineer, so that's, you know, I don't know if that's going to be adequate, I don't know how, you know, but that's something that I think just be aware of, of, you know, if there are any concerns from planning commission of how stormwater drainage will work. Obviously, Mont Eagle's not in, I don't know, a real neighborhood, and Mont Eagle floods, you know, it's a mountain. Well, if Mont Eagle floods, the entire area is. But that's just kind of thing, but again, that is, you know, a concern, you know, how narrow South Central Park is going, and, you know, there's concerns about how these culverts may have to be stormwater. Be adequate, but that's the main concerns I have. Again, you just want to come back for the final plat approval, so all these really have to sign off on this. The street supervisor is on that, so.
So in front of us at the moment is just a preliminary approval of.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
So stormwater will have to be looked at before it comes back for the final.
Not necess, I mean, stormwater, in terms, I mean, I don't know if there's anything required necessarily in the subdivision regulations. I know your stormwater ordinance applies to site plans, I don't know if it necessarily applies to new subdivisions.
I think this is much smaller than meets that requirement.
Yes, so I think that may be, your street supervisor will have to sign off, and that may be something you want to talk to the mayor, talk to your street supervisor, make sure those culverts can handle, you know, additional lots, you know, additional lots and that. Just the swell there will be adequate.
Just to be clear, we have a town engineer that oversees the stormwater ordinance and meeting those requirements.
Right.
So if you're familiar with the ordinance, you know, because in all honesty, I believe it would be in the watershed of Laurel Lake, that surrounding area, so to speak.
Yeah.
I understand the interstate, I understand the topography, but being our prime source, maybe our only source of water, we want to do the best we can to make it as well.
If you look at your booklets on the right-hand side, you'll see a survey, it's labeled A. And in that survey right there, those are the surveys I used to use up north. And what I had was, some of those lots are thirty feet wide, many of them. I pulled out one of my old lots. And you'll see all the small numbers on there, those are all the levels of where the grade is going to be. The state of Tennessee in that, which I don't understand why, and the surveyors don't require them here. When I built up north, I had to have a as-built survey after the house was built to show that I swaled everything right, and all of the water was right, and everything else. I'm going to still remain to do that. I mean, I'm not going to allow people to call me back and say, my house has got water, I've got water banging up against the house, or the neighbor calls me and says that there's water in their yard. You've got to be able to shed that water away, and it has to be able to dissipate. The lots are deep enough that I can dissipate at both front and back, and if I do it just clearly to the front and the culvert, they're plenty wide enough to be able to put those swales in there to let that dissipate before it even hits the culvert. Plus, the ground itself is excellent, the ground is this, as the septic engineer had already told me, that it absorbs the water great, and so then that's a sandy, what do they call it, mountain dirt or something, they call it fountain soil or something, and so it will absorb that before it even hits the culvert, because where the distance of the houses are going to have off the road themselves. But that's what that, that one section showed, that's why I put that in there, just in case there was a question on, you know, am I capable of swaling water away from the house? Again, I worked with houses that were thirty feet wide, they had a house on both sides. Well, you certainly didn't want, and plus they had basements, you certainly didn't want to flood your neighbor's basement, that's for sure. I used to get, I would get a lot of calls over that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Who were you using with your septic?
I haven't got a septic person yet.
Who did this once, who just was?
It was, it was a guy named Christopher Ford, and he's a state-certified person, yeah.
Right.
He did all, both properties, went and did, and actually went through each, and because they're all subdivided, I had them go to each lot, not like just a general whole area. He went to each lot, not the five hundred dollars, eleven thousand dollars, and he goes through each lot and checks each particular lot, so that we knew that each lot was going to be okay for the state.
And he was state-certified to cover both counties?
What's that?
He was state-certified.
Yes, he was, yeah, yeah, and the state, yeah, both counties and the state, yes.
Further comments or questions? Public work managers, we have a motion.
Jonathan, we're all, because it looks like on the plat.
Jonathan, what all, because it looks like on the plan that he submitted today, some things have been updated.
Mm-hmm.
Compared to the comments that you gave.
Yeah, so the comments, showing that there's, you know, counting for the side corner lots, so the side, the corner side was put on twenty-five feet, so I believe it's ten, one, four, and six will all have to adhere to whatever the side, set factors for the corner lot. That's, that's when it comes to, you know, the building permit stage. So wherever, you know, wherever the house is facing, the side will be the side corner, you know, for the corner lot. I believe he did show the, 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 sorry, abandoned, the lot line's between existing two parcels. So you see, it's, it's kind of in the area, there's a lot in here, so, and ten and nine is where you see where the existing lot lines are, it's shown abandoned. As far as I know, the postmaster is addressing the mailbox, which wasn't really a Montegoal thing to address, but I want you guys to be aware of that in, you know, your, you know, approval, because, you know, don't necessarily want to prove something if you know that none of those lots will get no access. It's kind, it's more for you and for the developer, really in many ways more for the developer in case they're unaware of this, because you don't want to come in and the postmaster will say, well, actually, we need a mail kiosk, and now you have no way to put a mail kiosk.
Right. My phone will be ringing, yes.
Hi.
Here's, here's a letter if you need that, and this is Sherry, the postmaster, she did write me a letter last Tuesday.
Yeah, if you can give that to the commission.
Okay.
Then talk to the fire chief that the, the fire hydrants would be, you know, hydrant block will be adequate for that. You said that Travis said that was fine.
Yeah.
Sufficient. And again, like I said, like this is a preliminary plan, so it has come back for final plan, so if there are any additional concerns that come up, a preliminary plan does not constitute a final plan approval. You know, any issues that arise in the final plan review would have to be addressed by the developer before improvement, because the final plan is what's actually reported. You can't report a preliminary plan.
Further discussions or comments? Or motions?
My first thought was, it seems like he laid it here, was the density of the property and the water runoff, but as long as that can be addressed later, and like we said, ten new, ten new homes, so.
Right. Lee, on y'all?
We are approving the preliminary plan.
Yes.
I'm a commotion that we approve the preliminary plan, what is this called?
Oh, the landings.
Landings of money. Second on that motion?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
New business? Any new business with us tonight? Ms. Powell, how things going for you back there?
Well, slowly. I would like to bring up something with the planning commission regarding the sign ordinance for the city. And the main reason I bring this up is because the Skoll chiropractic sign that's down here on the corner of Central and West Main, that building is, I don't, I don't know that it's been abandoned, but that, that business has not been there for I don't know how long, but that sign has been, been there. According to what I've been told, the rule with the city on signage is that you just have to maintain it. Well, if there's no business, just doing business under Skoll chiropractic there, you know, I, I would hope that the commission would make an addendum to the ordinance to say that if that business is not there anymore, that sign needs to go away. It would be the same as if, for instance, if Dollar Tree left, you wouldn't let them leave that Dollar Tree sign there, they'd have to remove it, I would, I would think. But according to the ordinance, they wouldn't have to, they'd have to maintain it. So I'm just asking that the commission consider an addendum that if that business is not doing business there, then that sign needs to go away.
Okay.
Is that us or the municipal code?
I don't know what.
Do you have a sign ordinance, the zoning ordinance? I can talk with Travis.
Travis told me that.
Travis lawyer, building inspector, someone, I can talk with him to see whether that's a zoning or missing. If it's zoning, then it can originate from the planning commission, and it's municipal, it has to originate from.
Okay, Travis told me, that's where I got my information, was Travis.
You got the same situation where former Up and Smoke was, where they got Donut or whatever it is.
That Donut's been here forever.
And you got locals, Marv, same situation.
Yeah, well, and, and this gentleman right here said that his property, there's an old towing sign that there, where you're going to build on. I mean, that, things like that just are eyesore, really.
I agree.
So if, if the commission would consider making an addendum to that.
Can I ask for clarification on that, the next thing, if that is in our favor, whether that goes?
And, and one other thing to add to that, the reimagine Montegoal committee, the steering committee's going to be getting back together soon. We've kind of defined some committee definitions and things like that, but I think that's something that's a little bit, that's on the table for the Imagine Montegoal folks to look at, to propose either to the planning commission or to the city council to, to maybe tighten up some of the sign ordinances, because I know this got brought up with the suggestion of the electronic sign from Montegoals, the new sign from Montegoal Elementary. And there was some question about whether an electronic sign is the right way to go on that, so I think this is going to be revisited sooner rather than later, and, you know, Jonathan, if you can give clarification, or mayor, if you could give clarification, either one, whether that falls on city council or whether it falls on planning commission, but that will, I think that will be addressed soon.
I just have one other thing, one little question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
There's a rumor going around that the city is thinking of developing the truck stop. Is there any validity to that?
We really don't do much about rumors, too. Haven't heard that one either. I haven't heard that one either.
Okay, I'm so glad to hear that. I'll put that to rest.
Eminent domain there.
Any other rumors, I didn't do it.
I wish.
If there's any other rumors, I didn't do it. I wasn't there.
Any further new business?
I would like to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to thank Lorraine for her service.
Yes.
Jessica, not you.
Thank you.
I know she'll still be putting Easter eggs out at Easter, and that's not going to get out of her blood for a while. I looked at the Christmas tree she was making, it had little pigs on it and everything, she spent a lot of time with it.
Big piggy.
And I'd also like to welcome Dean and Grant.
Congratulations.
Not, not so much of a new face with Dean, maybe an older face, but just not, just not new, and Grant, welcome y'all. I'm excited about what y'all are going to do, and y'all can fuss and fight together.
Thank you.
Little housekeeping here. The mayor and the council requested a joint meeting to discuss the issues in zoning that we want to address with grant money. As I reached out to you, that is on the eleventh at 5:00 P.M. now, I've heard from you, glad y'all can join us, and I think that would be very important to us.
That's set for when?
Eleventh.
Eleventh of December at 5:00 P.M. to discuss zoning issues, because we seem to have some grant money, as I understand it, that we can spend on these issues, and we need to put them in a category of what we think is most important. So we'll be meeting with the council and try to work that out.
Love it.
Okay? Nate will be leading that.
Will we be getting preliminary information before?
That's up to Nate, I hadn't heard. I just picked the time out of there anyway. I don't remember anything, so we're going to.
Messenger, right?
Don't shoot the messenger. Further comments?
I'd just like to say thank you for your time and thank you for all that you've done there. I will build really wonderful houses, I can guarantee you that. And if you take a moment, when you get a chance to read the reference letters in there and the article and stuff like that, you'll understand the kind of person that I am and what I represent and how, how I do things.
We look forward to seeing you here again.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, by the way.